Okay, if I could, I'd like to begin the meeting since we have a floor. We need to go through the process of the meeting. So can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Sternkloss, present. Councilmember Viskara, absent. Councilmember Youn, here. Mayor Potem Chavez, absent. Mayor Blum?
Here. Okay, thank you. Uh, introductions, why don't we just go around the table and start with the state senator here?
Good morning, uh, it's Senator Anthony Hamnis, 24th Senate District.
Carl Blum, uh, councilmember and currently mayor of Temple City.
Brian Cook, city manager of Temple City.
Vince Yu, a city, uh, councilmember. I'll, I'll wait.
Lady Mayor Phil Rapp, city of Temple City.
Senator Sternkloss, councilmember.
Uh, Rob Charles, I'm the district director for Senator Anthony Hamnis.
Okay, thank you, thank you for, thank you for coming here and having some time to discuss. As we do, we provide opportunity for public comments. Anybody in the public here to comment at this time? Okay, once we finish public comments, Angelica, please introduce herself. If anyone can introduce yourself.
Sure, good morning, my name is Angelica Hamnis, I am Senator Hamnis Phil Rapp, and I cover water.
Water, alright.
Okay, uh, to start with, uh, we have a number of items, discussion items, I just wanted to pass on to the senator, we went to the, uh, the water forum, San Gabriel Valley Water Forum yesterday, and, uh, sort of the keynote speakers were John Lehrer from the Resource Agency and the senator Andrew Anthony Mender, and we were talking about the water bond. They had great things to say, like you and your support for making that happen, they said, you know, without you in the senate, they, they were talking about the challenges of getting there and going, so, I know we've talked about this before, so I just want to thank you through the reference, and we have a resolution agreement, so next week we're going to be able to support, to support the water management. Okay, discussion items, economic development, and again, I'm looking for this, sorry, it would be an open discussion, this isn't, you know, when redevelopment disappeared, you know, we lost our tools, we didn't have a huge redevelopment area, but, you know, the challenges we face, uh, we have our, you know, we're looking at doing our downtown corridor, we have a bunch of small properties, which is very difficult to put together and to build projects, and, and I don't know what tools, I know there's, there's discussion going on, you know, is there some resurrected form of some kind for redevelopment, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that area, but our need is, you know, it's very, very challenging to try to redo an old downtown, it's not blighted, but yet there's, it'd be nice if there was some tool, so, so we haven't talked about a lot, other than, we know we have to do something, and whether there's anything there and any, you know, support to help, and the League of Cities and others are trying to contest these issues. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, or?
Yeah, um, would I, I'd like to make some little comments, if you don't mind.
Sure.
No, no problem. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, the councilmembers, of course, your new city manager and your city staff, and of course, the residents of Temple City of Temple City, for allowing me to spend some time with you this morning. Uh, let me tell you what I've done in the past, and what I would hope to continue to do with you. As you know, uh, I did not used to represent Temple City, but because of the redistricting, uh, who was your former senator? Was it Carol Luth?
Carol.
Carol Luth, so senators have odd and even election cycles, and, so she got districted out? Well, this is the new, gonna be the new 22nd senate district, uh, so, when they redistrict it, they assign it to me, and, because I will be taking it over officially, hopefully, not after this coming November. So what I've done with all the cities that I've represented, originally starting in the assembly and now in the senate, I always try to, number one, have a relationship with all the city councilmembers. As you know, all of you here, I made appointments to sit down with you in coffee shops, to get to know who you are as a person, find out what your concerns are, and how I can better represent you in Sacramento. Then what I like to do periodically with all the cities is have a noticed meeting, so that you can bring up issues that are concerned specifically for your city, and then to get to know your staff, but more important, how our staff can interact with your staff to help you address concerns. I'll give you examples, on the city of Azusa, uh, is, is simple as when they were building the new Target, they were having trouble getting a permit for the elevator, well, we can cut through a lot of that, we called the department directly, we were able to help you guys out. Other cities, you know, when you have trouble, I know you guys don't have freeway access, we're constantly calling Keltrans to get stuff done in many cities. So our responsibility is to serve the cities that I represent. So, that's why I like doing these, uh, and I like to do them on a regular basis, and every meeting, whenever you want them, as much as you want them, just let me know what issues at hand, I'd be more than happy to address them. As you know, Clay represents the city of Temple City, we brought him here today because he had some questions on water and the export permit, of course, my chief district director, uh, Rob Charles, all of my staff is accessible to anybody within the city and the city staff, as well as elected officials. With regard to economic development, uh, as you know, with the dissolution of redevelopment, uh, it has hit a lot of cities, uh, I can tell you that when the bill originally was on the floor in the senate, in the assembly, I can remember that it was changing the current system of redevelopment, it wasn't eliminated, and what it was doing is, because we were in tough economic times, and it was gonna do a pass-through of money to be able to fund more school, school funding. Well, as you know, it was challenging the courts, the judge upheld and said that, uh, yes, the legislature has the ability to intercede, but more importantly, they dissolved redevelopment. Now, I believe that most of the legislature, the assembly and the senate are very, very aware, concerned, and listen to the various cities, and there have been a series of bills introduced throughout the year to kind of mimic, uh, what has occurred in the past, but I will tell you, the, the biggest obstacle, I believe, is not the legislature, the biggest obstacle is the governor. And I think that any form of redevelopment, this prior version, will most likely get vetoed from the governor, uh, and, so that's why you're not seeing a lot of redevelopment moving in that direction. But, uh, just very briefly, there were some bills this year, SB 628, Bell, AB 471, Atkins, and, and they tried to address some of the concerns that the cities have, uh, but maybe what I can do, I don't know if they have, Rob wants to kind of give you an update of what's going on, on the bills that have been introduced, but I'm very aware, and this is probably the number one issue that every time I meet with all my cities, this is a concern, so I hear you loud and clear, so I'm gonna turn over to Rob, so he can give you an update.
So, the, the two bills you mentioned, SB 628 by, uh, Senator Bell, and then AB 471 by, uh, our new speaker, Atkins. Uh, 628, uh, creates, or takes the existing infrastructure finance districts and enhances them a bit, and allows them to use for a few more things that they weren't able to use for before, including things like brownfield restoration, that kind of stuff. It also, uh, moves the threshold from two-thirds to fifty-five percent, uh, to actually do the, the want issue when you go to the vote for, to get support of the, the community. Basically, just to allow those to be used in a little bit more robust manner. The other bill, um, by Atkins, actually gets rid of the restriction, because previously, infrastructure finance districts could not overlap with, um, redevelopment areas, this eliminates that prohibition. Um, so, if you have projects that you're wanting to do that may overlap with your former redevelopment area, this, this whole redevelopment, and infrastructure finance districts, for those who aren't aware, these are, uh, special districts created to do, uh, public works related type, uh, projects, they could be anything from like parks, streets and roads, uh, I mean, anything that, uh, that's kind of infrastructure related, even like sewer, water, that kind of thing, so.
Okay, good, yeah, any questions at all?
I don't think so. We're, we're in the front end of trying to do our last two months, and I'm sure Brian will be involved, Vince is involved in one of the committees we have, so we're in the front end of looking like that, but, you know, it's sort of the finance type districts.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer's gonna be for us, but, just having those tools available for us.
Yeah, if I could, and Mr. Mayor, and Senator, just wanna say that, you know, without the redevelopment, it's really hard for cities such as ours, as being a small entity, to, to really pull projects together. Uh, I don't know if you have a chance to meet, but a school board member can know and work at Temple City Unified School District. I mean, we're really looking, this district and us, trying to really work together, and look at possibilities of, uh, redeveloping our, our, uh, our downtown, so to speak, our, our city hall, as well as there, as the, uh, uh, headquarters building, et cetera, but it's really hard to get it off the ground without tools such as redevelopment. We look at P3, which is private, uh, public partnership, but, you know, to get a project like that off the ground, it's really a lot of funding and resources, so it, you know, the state, you know, uh, whatever help we get from the state will be very appreciated. Because, uh, as a city, we, our resource is very limited, we own very little, we live in state, all we own are streets, basically, and, uh, to get any capital projects such as this off the ground, uh, for a city such as our size, is quite difficult.
Could you, I, I don't know the answer, but does, does the city of Temple City have a redevelopment agency?
We did, it was a small redevelopment, basically, the corner of Rosebee and Los Tunas, and there's, uh, shopping center area there, established long time ago, twenty-five years ago.
One, yeah.
A long time, so, all that stuff with Kmart and office people, that was all done through the, the, uh...
It was done through redevelopment?
Yeah.
So is, prior to the dissolution of redevelopment, was there any properties that were qualified as lighted that couldn't have been done through a redevelopment agency? Can I say this?
To be honest with you, we'd have to stretch to try to do that.
Yeah.
This is not a blighted community, to be honest with you, so it's, so it's more of the finance, so dissolution of redevelopment, well, it took a tool away, I mean, it didn't, you know, kick us in the teeth or something.
Because to qualify for redevelopment, the term light has to be meant, you can't just develop a property for the sake of development.
Right, right.
Uh, I know there's a lot of things in the legislature that allow you to do the parks and the infrastructure and the roads, but I'm just curious, I'm not real world familiar with, if there's any blighted areas that could have been done. The other thing too, some of the other cities that we work with, were, fortunately for you, you don't have any property and, uh, ended up in finance, and, with a, because of the dissolution, there's actually where some projects were started, that the, the finance department has kind of taken over those projects, and we're working to help those cities kind of put them, you know, at ease. So fortunately, you guys don't have that.
No, no, we were, we were in a pretty good shape, right?
Okay, but, uh, if I could just add, uh, but right before the dissolution, we did look at redevelopment as a strategy for the Rosebee, Las Tunas Corner, if I, we thought there might be some opportunities for us to do so, but of course, that's all gone. Yeah, we did actually spend a lot, we even have a committee meeting, educating our citizens and ourselves on what redevelopment is, right? That's like half a year ago for the dissolution.
Yeah, second item, I mean, you know, most of these are funding related, uh, the next one is basically road maintenance, and, uh, you know, I know we've got the gas tax, you know, as we've posted these things, you get a couple of things going on, so we're getting more fuel-efficient cars, which means you buy less gas for the less gas tax, the number of miles driven is probably still the same, so the wear and tear on the roads is the same, and, uh, I, I know there's some discussion going on, and it's challenging it is to, is there a replacement for the gas tax, or does the gas tax get pumped up? And we did a payment management study here in the city, and, I mean, a lot of our roads, if you drive, our major roads are okay, a lot of our residential streets are, are really getting worn out, and, uh, you know, the recommendation we had was you need to spend two to three million dollars a year to keep them up, and we've been spending a million and thought we were doing good, until we took a hard look and said, whoops, and the question is, okay, how do we, how do we fund this? I mean, we wanna keep sustainable infrastructure in the city here, and, you know, as we watch the revenue from this, you know, so it's, it's a good thing we're getting more fuel-efficient vehicles, then you get the electrical, the electric vehicles where they're not buying gas at all, and, uh, but they're still using their, the roads and worrying about it and all that other stuff, so, I guess, I'm sure this isn't new to you, I mean, it's an issue everybody's facing at this point, and we're facing it nationally, not just here in California, but, you know, any, I think any assistance in that area.
Again, this is another issue that I hear from most, not all the cities, you're right, it's not only national, state, as well as local, with the, uh, ever-changing way how individuals, uh, get around, and we're encouraging mass transit, we're encouraging, you know, electric vehicles, we're encouraging hybrid, and the old mechanism of the gas tax, there's less money available for infrastructure, uh, so the question is, what do you do, how do you raise that amount of revenues to address those little roads that are being used? There's a discussion going on now, and it's very, very premature, I can't even begin to tell you that it's gonna come to fruition in my next forty years, it's the miles traveled tax, uh, and what there's, kind of, this talk about, that you're gonna get taxed based on your vehicle, how many miles you drive, so if you drive very short distance, you're gonna have a lower tax, because you don't use the infrastructure much. If you're a salesperson that travels all over, then you're gonna get taxed a little bit more. That, I think, would come with a lot of resistance, because it's, it's, but in fairness, if you think about it, the ones who used roads and wear and tear it the most, are the ones who drive it the most, that's kind of been the discussion, which, but there hasn't been any bills, there hasn't been any to address it, but I think that's what you're gonna start hearing now, as we start looking at potential legislation, as far as how we repair our roads, and how that goes back into infrastructure. But, um, nothing, you know, at the state level that has come through the legislative league, I can tell you what we've been working on statewide, uh, obviously, we're looking at the goal line, you know, it doesn't affect you, PSR 60, uh, introduced a bill for Metro to make apparent and transparent their, uh, long-term strategy, how they fund different projects, with regard to, um, funding of the projects. The other thing, and, and unfortunately, because I think you guys are a landmark between the two, um, major freeways, uh, that bill that just got assigned by the governor, which is going to extend the sunset date permanently for the HOV, or the, um, hot lanes, hot lanes, right, they're called hot lanes, that are going from downtown LA to right to the end of the 605. I initially was, had some concerns, because we were gonna take public roads and charge a toll, but I've changed my mind, because the money that's generated for the toll during that period through the hot lane, goes to those respective areas, or, exactly what you're talking about, for means of infrastructure. So, that sun, that was a pilot project, it had a sunset date, the governor saying that bill to extend that permanently. So that money, those tolls are still gonna be there, are the hot lanes, but money will go into the infrastructure for, you know, maintenance and roads and highway, et cetera.
Uh, even though we don't have, you know, freeways, ten is south of us, the two ten is north of us, the goal line is north of us, I mean, even that does affect us, I mean, our, our Las Tunas corridor, the people that through town here, we get great volumes, the majority of them are moving from way over there to way over there, they're using this because the freeways are congested, they find this is, uh, you know, everybody finds their, their path, there's resistance, so, if just the goal line goes in, extends further, is, you know, if freeways are more efficient than that, you know, that, that could relieve some of the pressure that we have. It was one of the big discussions we have, looking at rebuilding that downtown, is just the sheer volume of traffic we have going through here, because they're using this as an alternative to other things. So, anyhow, that's just under, it's something I, it's a big issue, but it is significant to us.
And, and, look, Mr. Mayor, I may just make a comment, Senator, appreciate you're here, and I will also urge you, because you talked about all, all, uh, freeways and other policies that concern roads, congestion, you know, I would also urge the, the state to keep continuing supporting alternative transportation. I wear funny shoes today, not because I, this respectful meeting, actually, I wore my bike key right now, um, and I hope that the state would continue supporting, uh, or, instead of taxing people who are driving how many roads, and maybe think of ways that you incentivize people taking alternative, uh, transportation, such as bikers.
Yeah, and I know there've been numerous bills since I've been in the legislature, I anticipate they continue with regard to, um, you know, transportation, blocking, a lot of the cities are looking at, um, having walk pass, bypass, and this bill just signed this year by the governor that's allowing more, three feet.
I was aware of that when I was riding here, just that, that you're gonna stay away from it.
So, it's, it's, it's of concern, and it's, it hasn't gone a deaf ears, and I know the legislature's constantly looking at that.
Can I just share the, although it's still preliminary, it, it's in discussion, and the idea of taxing people that, um, have to travel further to, um, get to work, just seems incredible to me, uh, you know, the state has been very reluctant in the past to provide adequate transportation, California is notorious for, you know, if you look around it, you can travel to other cities, you see the, um, transportation, the availability of transportation, and, um, we're, we're behind the times, and we're trying to catch up with the high-speed rail and, and other things, but, especially in a community such as ours, you have younger families, or my children, or children of some of our residents, who can afford to, you know, possibly, um, buy a home in our city, but they, they wanna live here, so they will rent a home, but they're driving out to Rancho Cucamonga and San Bernardino for jobs, because that's, I mean, not that there's more jobs out there, but with the recession, a lot of people have lost their jobs and have had to take jobs that are further away from home, and, that in itself is, you know, costing them a lot more, and then to have to pay more because they have to travel further, just doesn't seem like a really good discussion, so I just wanted to share that.
And I know, and that's probably the biggest concern, and that's why there's never been, there hasn't been, as of yet, any legislation introduced, but that's the discussion, that's where they're, what they're talking about, and the biggest pushback is gonna be, why I have to pay more, I want to drive anymore.
Okay, anybody else have a, okay, third, the third one's stormwater cleanup, I guess you're here for that one, as, as you're aware, it started way back in Clean Water Act, when those were dominating, and, you know, the state, Regional Water Board Control Board, setting the requirements, and, I guess it's not here, and, you read a, I guess, a League of Cities meeting recently, and there's several people talking about this, and what this may mean to cities, and what we have to do, and, so anyhow, they gave some numbers, what they think it might be, and for personally pencil that out for the city, and I went, whoa, it's a lot of money? It was, it was three to four million dollars, or two to, two to four billion for our city, and we have a general fund budget of eleven million, like, you know, where is this coming from? We understand, you know, what's trying to be done, I mean, it's not that we disagree with the goal, what's trying to be done, but, I can't find that, that funding, that balance is a funding mechanism, I mean, how do we do this? I know, I know the state, state water bond, there's money in there, sort of down payment to start some of this stuff, and, so, and the counties looking at some stuff, I mean, everybody's looking at it, and saying, how do we accomplish this? And right now, you know, the technology that's available, and the level of the standards is tough, and, yeah, the state, and I know you usually need some incentive to make something happen, you know, and you put the ten thousand dollars a day fine if you violate this, and but, I penciled that out one time, and how long would it take the state to own the city of Temple City? It wouldn't be very long, and I thought, dang, I don't think you want to go that route. So anyhow, that's, you know, a serious question, we, uh, we know it's coming, and, you know, it's not quite here yet, and we just, you know, just changed our street sweeping requirements and town, and we're getting a fair amount of pushback from people who, you know, can't park in the side on these days, and, you know, so we've got all kinds of stuff going on, and that's, to me, that's simple. So anyhow, I don't know what you have, but let's, let's kind of fight this one.
Sure, no, and it is definitely a challenge that we completely understand, that is particular to every individual city, based on their individual overall operating budget, and we do understand that it does take out a large percentage, if, when you count everything in. Um, one of the resources that we actually put into your folders, if you look at it, would be the grant for small water programs through COP 84, um, that is available to individual cities, it is a grant process, um, we did apply to with a copy of the, um, revised August 2013 program, and then there's a few others also inside. Individual cities have actually applied and have gotten grants to use with small water programs, um, I'm not sure if you were aware of that, but it is one of the resources that are available, and, and that registered office would be available to, probably potentially, um, maybe write support letters, et cetera, to assist you in the whole process of your grant money.
And I, I know a lot of the solution, this is very tough, just city by city, I mean, it's water sheds.
Right.
And I know, you know, there's efforts taking place to address the water sheds, and, like, the cities to, in the watershed, to body the water for stopping, so it's, it's complicated, I know we don't have all the answers, like, for water down the road, and I guess my, my appeal is, I'll be, I, I worked in a county before I ended up in this job, and, I guess I was irritated, state board, and I'm sure it's individuals, but, you know, their, their answer at that time was, tough, we'll make regulations, you figure out how to do it, or if you don't do it, we're gonna penalize, and it's like, come on, you know, we can work better than that to make it happen, so, and that needs to happen, I'm not sure, just looking for the spending mechanisms, and I'm glad the city's grant program, and there needs to be something coming from the other side, if we all wanna make this done, just don't hit us with these heavy brakes and walk away, it's like, tough.
No, no, I agree, and, and this is the part that, to address the cost, but, let's talk a little bit about what you said, and the concerns we have, and the concerns I have as well. This is probably one of the highest priority of concerns for most of the cities that I, that I represent, and it was first brought to my attention, I'm gonna guess, maybe four, four, five years ago, and if you look at, exactly what you said, the, the Regional Water Board, those are individuals that are appointed by the governor, but they're approved by the legislature, but in particular, they're approved by the California State Senate, and mo, in the past, and prior boards, most of those board members have always been from the coastal area. So I understand that, yes, we gotta make sure that water, when it gets to the ocean, it's, it should be clean, uh, but there was regulations that were adopted to make sure that they look at all the bacterial levels coming from all the cities, whether it's from rain, and gutters, and street cleaners, et cetera, and they put a lot of mandates, what I would call unfunded mandates, on, on, on behalf of the cities. So I first heard about it from the city of Almani, and I was not aware of it, well, since that point, I've engaged politically at the state level, so that when any kind of appointments came up for regional water boards, I was very adamant, as a matter of fact, I tried to hold up appointments for individuals unless they heard the concerns of the San Gabriel Valley, and one of the individuals that was gonna get appointed, I made it very clear, I go, look, I have constituents, which are my cities, that you guys are putting regulations on them to charge them and fine them, so that, you know, that you can, they can reach your, your goals. Well, since then, the makeup of the board has changed dramatically, the dynamics and the politics of the board, and they're very, very aware of what's going on, especially in the San Gabriel Valley, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, there's been kind of coalition cities that are coming together, you know, how we're gonna address it, as you know, with the county, there was a initiative, unfortunately failed, to kind of offset this with a property tax, so our office is working, and, and with all the cities, to figure out a mechanism, especially when we're dealing with the export permits, and, how do you determine which city's responsible for the bacteria levels that come out of the gutters that go into the main river basin? So these are things that we're very aware of, and we're working with, and a staff reminder was down here, who's up north, uh, has become an expert in water, and feel free to use her as a resource, and our office as a resource, and I don't know, have you, have we invited them to our regional meetings with the various cities that we've had in the past, to, to address?
Have, we will definitely.
Yeah, but we'll make sure we'll follow up and do that, so no, this one, I'm, I'm very concerned, so, the Regional Water Board, you're very aware of the concerns of the San Gabriel Valley now.
Yeah, I know, I know the recent Supreme Court ruling, you know, basically kicked it back to the county flood control and says, you got it, and of course, they turned around and say, okay, you cities got it, so here we are.
So, this is... So this is a real problem and I hear you and I have a concern as well. So this is something that we'll be engaged in as long as I'm in office.
Good, good.
Really quickly, as you jumped in, the grant right here. This is the round two grant. This round is already over, but round three is coming up. So if the city is interested, you know, definitely contact your office and we can definitely give you some assistance for the round three.
And I know we're engaged in the regional discussions. Having been involved in some of this in the past, I know that's probably the best of real solution to view from a broader perspective. Okay, the fourth one there is local control. Obviously, and I thank the legislature on the, the SAGE Harbor legislation. And I think you got it back to where we can control that. So I thank you for that. I think we talked about that previously. So all these issues, whether it's SAGE Harbors, whether it's marijuana, whatever it is, that, you know, if you surcharge power, which is in a pretty tough spot. We're a small city and suddenly things start overpowering. We've had, it seems like we get a run of whatever is the hottest thing out here runs into the city. You're like, wait, you're dominating everything going on around here. So anyhow, it was just there for that, but just.
Okay. Can I give you a perspective of how originally the law was written and then how we changed it and why? If you look at SAGE Harbors, individuals who go into that profession wanted to legitimize what they do as a profession. So they wanted to be licensed. Well, it's very expensive to license in a city of California. You have to have a board, you have to have a licensing agency. So they came up with a bill, I think it was 731, to have kind of a, under Department of Consumer Affairs as a bureau to set up this mechanism to do kind of a licensee with a nonprofit entity to, as an entree into professionalizing SAGE Harbors, masseuse, is that what they're called? Masseuses? To become professionals. Well, what happened, it took away a lot of, there was unintended consequences, it took away the local control. And one of the cities that I represent had, I think, the largest number per capita, which is San Gabriel. So legislature, I mean, the law was put into place. We saw unintended consequences, it was rectified. So it puts back the control to allow your police agencies, police departments be able to monitor. You can determine whether or not they're going to go in. But yet we still want to try to legitimize that profession so that they can be considered professionals.
Well, to see if I could, and just add a little background to that. You know, obviously, we represent our constituents, our residents. And I think, I've been on, well, both the mayor and I had been on a private commission for six years before we joined the council. So we've been hearing a lot from our residents and the collective opinion has always been, at least in our city, we really do not want to see SAGE businesses. And obviously, as council members, that's why we have a private commission. We actually ordinance, local ordinance, they imply that that's, unfortunately, the state basically trumped us on that. And then we actually have a lot of pushback on residents, a lot of people angry, why you guys upset and a lot of that. Obviously, we see the profession need from the state point of view, but we really would like having a lot of control. So this helps bring some balance back to us.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be, I guess basically, I guess I'll open it up a little bit different. You know, what are the hot issues coming up that we should be aware of? And the other, what can we do as a city, as a council, as staff to support you in the effort that you? You're up there banging away at stuff and sometimes we're sure you're pretty lonely when you're banging away at things up here.
Well, first of all, what I would encourage is to continue to play conversation and continue a relationship and have dialogue. Because I will tell you that I get more information from copies we have in these meetings. Because if I don't hear what your concern is, then I'll vote, I can vote the opposite direction. The other thing I will do is I will provide all of you, I have to write it to myself. When I'm, if there's an issue or a bill that's in front of the legislature, you have a concern, call me or text me. And I always try to return the call or return the message as soon as possible. Now, if I fundamentally disagree with the policy, I'll at least tell you. But I've had more, like, for example, I have great relationships with my chiefs of police in all my cities. And the Covina chief of police literally calls me regularly. And I base a lot of what I vote on for public safety, have my police chiefs, my school board members. So by having this relationship, you know, I can hear your concerns when a bill is up to vote. So that's the absolute most important for me, please.
Speaking of school board, Ken Oliver's in the school board here. Just past Tuesday, we had a joint city council and school board meeting. We have a standing committee that deals with whatever issues, usually once a year or so. They're going to hold and talk about issues. So we did, it was a good meeting. And we could talk about this after. The staff, they passed a school bond recently. They're starting to get out of the construction. So we've got a number of projects that are underway and are swimming into Department of State Architecture to review. One that they have, and I can give you the stuff here, there's a number that they're in for review, but one seems to be stuck. It's a high school project. They tore down a couple of big buildings and sort of Main Street, everybody sees it. Tore it down and nothing. Everybody's saying, what is going on? They fenced it off and it's just sitting there vacant. Apparently, it's in the apartment for review. At least the feedback I got from the school seems to be stuck. It's very wrong in usual. There's other ones that are, where they're there, but they seem to be going through the review process, but it's just that wrong. So I'll give you that information and be able to.
Exactly what you've said is what we should be comfortable with if we can. And we kind of contact the school board, we contact the superintendent. If it's an issue with the park within the state of California, we can proceed and try to find out what the reason is or possibly, certainly whether it's licenses for clinics, health clinics or providers or, I guess, the Seuss or the elevator clinics. So they usually take calls from our office. We start, because we control the budgets.
Right.
So yes, we will definitely proceed if it's an issue and figure out and find out.
No, I appreciate that. Like Vince, I worked for the county and when Mike Antopovich called, got a little more attention than I have somebody else's contact. So I'll provide that information on behalf of the school board. You guys have to check it out. So I don't know if you've got any other, anything coming up in the legislature that we should be aware of?
As far as the hot items, I can tell you with this governor, and I'm assuming he's going to get reelected, he has taken his judicial responsibility extremely serious to the point where, you know, very few of any tests are ever raised unless public approval. So I would assume that everything we do next year is going to be with that in mind and with a balanced budget and if the economy can boost up. I would assume that high-speed rail is going to continue to pour as a big issue. The big issues like water, I've already heard. Healthcare is still kind of in the, ongoing with regard to the second enrollment of COVID California. And then, of course, you're going to see thousands of bills introduced into the legislature. But I can't predict what's going to become a hot item. But this year during the session was a plastic bag. Stuff that just kind of ends up, you know, as the hot issues being here.
Okay? Let me just go around.
No, I think I said a point of comment, but I just want to repeat Senator. Thank you so much for reaching out to us. And like he said earlier, he actually had set aside appointments and had one-on-ones outside of this formal setting. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Fortunately, I've been able to meet with everyone and just have not been able to set a point where his job is, right? Yeah, it's just our schedules have always come up. So.
Sophia?
I would just like to commend the senator on some of your healthcare bills that are particularly dear to my heart. And that would be the SB 804, the Medi-Cal eligibility, Sandy Net for pregnant women. I just think it was a long time coming. And then my mom, from a personal perspective, had Pelletive Care. And it was the first time I was ever introduced to what Pelletive Care was for a period of time. And I can't say enough about having SB 104 in place. I think it really made a difference in our lives as a family. So thank you so much for those. And one last thing. I know that there's still residents that have a concern and are very confused about the Medi-Cal and the Obamacare, you know, how they're woven together and how they're, you know, not together. I had a resident just called us that she was so frustrated that she had to wait. She was diagnosed with breast cancer, but had to wait because of the Medi-Cal issue with Obamacare and getting all that in place. And I know we were at some point trying to schedule an informational meeting for our residents and it just didn't happen. So I don't ever think it's too late to inform our residents about healthcare issues. And they continually change. And so we can still plan on doing that. I would love to see that.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy. Obviously, that's the area that I'm most concerned about. Chair of the Senate, I think we can do a whole forum, we can talk about COVID California, we can do something about the, you know, eligible, some of the CalDigm. We can do a whole seminar. Just let us know where you'd like to have.
Okay, we can have Jazelle work with.
Sure.
Thank you.
Clay's not only the field representative for the city, but he also does help policy for the center of the district, so.
So he's a great guy.
Senator, that's three weeks from me.
Okay, all right. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I look forward to our staff collaborating with each other. We have an open door policy with our staff and concerns or issues that you're seeing and conversely, we're seeing. An open and honest dialogue is always extremely helpful and a core to good collaborative work and relationship with your staffs.
I mean, just kind of echo what you said and what the senator has emphasized. You know, our office, we're here to serve the senator's constituents. So anything you need, your city, your constituents, please feel free to contact us. You know, I mean, on everything, I mean, on the big policy items that are affecting the city as a whole, down to things that are affecting local residents, maybe include or involve state agencies. We just had the assistant city manager from West Buda call our office yesterday because they had run into a constituent who was, who'd actually been relocated from another state for a job, had been promised the relocation expenses and the job and salary and everything else. And then suddenly the job had disappeared and they were stranded. So, I mean, it could be things as simple as that with one individual or it could be, you know, issues for the whole city. So just let us know and we're always available. You can contact Clay, you can contact me or any other member of our staff. And we're always happy to help, so.
Any of the partners have any questions?
I see Ken Oliver's with the school board, so he's a school member.
Well, I thought you were a public comment, right?
Okay, we'll move to public comments. I want to speak as a public, not as a school board member, okay? But I want to thank the senator for his visibility in the city because I remember seeing him at the Relay for Life at the high school, also at the Rosewood dedication ceremonies and that. So I'd like to thank you for his participation, at least for the city's invisible to the city. A couple of concerns I have. One is to reinforce what Carl just mentioned about the plans in the Department of Education for the state approval, the plans requiring a state approval. I understand there's another side of it. And one of the other sides probably is the state probably saving money, cut back a lot of the resources to different state agencies. Maybe one of the reasons why it's taking longer to do something. So it may be, the solution maybe is to be able to give them additional funding or at least give them a contract authority. As I understand it, they used to use contract support to do some of the plan reviews and they no longer have budget money to do that, so they no longer have a contract to do that. So it may, those may be more solutions. But I, if push comes to shove, I'd rather see us be bump number priority number one and review our plans. Under one of the items, economic development, we have money to spend. We're ready to spend it, except we're waiting for approval on some plans. We're going to create jobs, we're going to spend money in the city. And so it's a win-win for everybody, I think. The taxpayers already approved the bond issue and that. So I just like to reinforce that. The other one is, I'd like you to hopefully keep a close look, close eye on the new funding for schools, the LCFF. In the next six years, at the end of the next six years, you have now asked the school districts to double, almost double their contribution to the state school retirement plan. It's not the Temple City Unified School District Retirement Plan, it's the state. But we're the ones who are carrying the burden because we're going to have to pay something like nineteen point one percent of the salaries, which is the largest cost to the city, to the school district, towards retirement because it's underfunded. And you have all the controls over how this fund was set up and et cetera. So it's just something to keep your eye on and to ensure that we get our, that we don't get an unfair burden in a sense. The other one is, and this is kind of a general one, is Prop 89, when it was passed a long time ago, required that, in a sense, that I think it was thirty-nine percent would come out of the general fund maybe for education. But as usual, people have figured out how to not put money into the general fund and maneuver around stuff so that the general fund is not, I mean, the amount you give to education based on, there's something that you guys can play with, you can pick a number in a sense. Instead of being the floor, it's now become the ceiling. And I guess that's a concern that I have. The water issue, we, the school district, at least in Temple City, and I think, I don't know if the other districts are the same thing, if you exclude the streets, which the city owns, we're the largest landowner in the city. And I think that, so when you talk about the water issues, the schools are the one, the public property, the school systems itself, are the ones that are going to be affected largely, not only the cities, but the schools are going to bear a rather hefty cost for water. And I don't know how you solve the problem, but just be aware that it's not only the cities that have to come up with money to help support this, but we, the school districts, are in a sense going to give it to the city, who are going to give it to the county, who will then use it for whatever your state has done. Also, one of the other areas, maybe to take a hard look at or follow, and as I understand it, the governor is opposed to it, but is the facility, school bonds, which the governor, I think the legislature is on board to pass one, but the governor doesn't want to do it. And it may be that nothing will happen for school financing through this, through matching funds and et cetera, until the governor, maybe another four years, but it's something to take a hard look at down the road. And then also, I guess, this is local control again. Here's, I guess I have a personal concern is thirty years ago, people said that cigarettes didn't cause you any problem, but now it's, it is a problem and secondhand smoking is a problem. But I think the e-cigarettes are also a potential problem. And I'd like to see that in some sense treated as a tobacco issue and some of the restrictions that are for tobacco. Because we're starting to see more and more kids using the e-cigarettes. And I'm not sure that's a correct trend. I don't have enough information one way or the other to tell you whether that's appropriate or not. And also, something that, once again, just to be aware of. And also, something that, once again, just to be aware of, there's a proposition on the ballot about the rainy day fund, and if it's passed, the way it's worded, it allows the state to put $1 in the rainy day fund, and once you put the $1 in, then you trigger a reserve for schools, and lower the reserve for the schools, which is a good way, maybe a good way to be able to free a bunch of money up, but a lot of schools, each school district's different, in the amount of what is appropriate reserves that they're gonna need, and so, I guess it's a question of, we're looking, we're going down the road of playing a game of a balance of who's gonna pay, and how we're gonna do it, but just be aware of that, that the downside for school districts, a lot of school districts could have some substantial problems, if you, the state decide to put $1 in the rainy day fund, if the proposition is passed, assuming it is. Those are my observations.
You did get your school district.
Yeah.
Anyway, he did get his school district board.
Yeah, no, it's not a school question. But I'm not, I'm just 20%, just like any one of these, so I'm speaking not only as a resident, senior citizen, but more importantly, and school board, but also more importantly as a registered holder, so, I'd like to make sure that you understand that I, right now, I'm speaking as a registered holder.
Okay, I can address some of the questions, or comments, as you know, the local control funding, I think is probably one of the most significant pieces of legislation that occurred in the state of California, I don't know the demographics or the makeup of your school district, but I'm assuming they're recipient, it's low income, I mean, reduced screen, reduced foster, English majors, et cetera, so it's, because it shifts the money, obviously, to the schools that need the money the most. With regard to the state retirement plan, CalSTRS, unlike CalPERS, does not have the authority as a board to raise rates to the state, which obviously the school boards have to ultimately pay for it, so CalPERS, over the years, has kept up the inflation, CalSTRS hasn't for many, many years, it takes that from the legislature, and that was an issue that was pretty daunting this year, because there's a $70 billion projected deficit, and if you think about the individuals who do, you know, the toughest jobs, I mean, you gotta make sure that, so, I understand that that's gonna be a real problem, that's why that was addressed this year. So I guess the question I have for the facility that you have in Limbo right now, does it have to go through OSHPEN whatsoever?
Yes, it does. The Department's there.
Okay, because I know that OSHPEN was having a backlog, and it was addressed, and the problem for the backlog was exactly what you mentioned, not enough engineers, and that was due to the budget cuts back during the session, since then, the legislature has released a lot more money to, for OSHPEN, I don't know, I'm just particular department.
Yeah, they have seen similar issues.
Yeah, so I mean, we can obviously look into it, but as the economy's picking up, and the budget's addressing, I think those can be addressed.
And I think they go to new department head, who's vindicated, he's gonna try to speed things up, but it doesn't hurt, anybody that can push people forward will help us.
And then with regard to your question of Prop 98, 39%, you know, that's written into the constitution, and yes, there's years like Norman Schwarzer's administration where they borrowed from it, and the state is now starting to pay back areas, but that is written in the constitution, so you're guaranteed. However, when you have less money coming in the state, 39% of less money is still less money, that's the hard reality, and when it came to public education, there was a dramatic shift since Prop 15, that's when the state took it over. With regard to water, the cost, yes, I agree, and the facility school bond, that was, ran through the legislature, I believe the legislature had the whereabouts to want to put that in front, but it voted this year, and they take care of it, signature of the governor, the governor did not want it on this year's ballot, I think for a couple of reasons, probably because there was a lot of bonds on the ballot at the time, he wanted to make sure, I'm assuming, that the rainy day fund got passed, and unfortunately, because it's an election cycle as well, so I would think that that will be addressed in the future. With regard to e-cigarettes, I can't agree with you more, when you look at e-cigarettes, there's been some legislation going through, because it's not truly a cigarette per se, but there's a lot of studies showing that e-cigarettes do lead to smoking, and what happened, I mean, is the backlog industry is targeting kids, because there's no regulations, nothing, and what happens is they get used to it, and eventually one leads to smoking, and I think if it gets done, I honestly believe that needs to be addressed at the federal level, through the FDA, and regulates e-cigarettes just like we regulate tobacco as well. And with regard to the rainy day fund, yes, it's on the ballot, and I don't know all the specifics on it, but what we can do is our staff can follow up and give you all the information. I think I addressed all the comments.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else on your public comments? One, two, three, four, five, close public comments, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you having me.